We'll call the meeting to order, call the roll please.
Here.
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 Would you please stand and join me in the Lord's Prayer?
Our Father in the dark of heaven, I will be thy name; thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not in concetration, but deliver us from evil, for the power of the kingdom, and the glory of his name.
And please join me in the flags, please. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would any of the commissioners like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
May we approve the consent agenda?
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to approve the consent agenda. Sir, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sehorn. Is there any further discussion? Call a question? Motion carries seven odds. Item two, presentation by animal control of the pet of the week. Do we have a pet of the week?
No.
We do not have a pet of the week. Unless the chief would like to be the pet of the week. Thank you. Item three, citizens' participation. I'm going to go over the rules for citizens' participation just a little bit so that everyone will understand and just to remind the commissioners of the limits that we operate under. We have a limit to three minutes per individual and a 12 minutes in aggregate of the topic and a grand total of 24 minutes per meeting unless an extension is proposed by a commission member and approved by majority of the commissioners. Citizens wishing to address the city council, come forward, stand and be recognized, introduce yourself, sign in, and then you have three minutes. I would not anticipate that we will, we're not going to turn your mic off at three minutes, but I'm going to ask if you really will make an effort to abide by the three minutes. Our attorney's going to be keeping the clock and will give me a wave at the three minutes. At that point, I would request that you kind of wind up your comments in the next 10 or 15 seconds beyond that, so we'll go from there. The, y'all need to understand that the commissioners may not respond or dialogue with you during this discussion, so when we go from there, it's not a debate, it's not a back and forth. There's a time for that, and when we get to the point where we're taking action or proposing action on any particular agenda item, we may or may not schedule an open meeting or a hearing at which time those proponents and opponents, anything that we're considering, may speak. With that having said, I know that a lot of, a lot of the people that are here are here to address the recommendations of the Contract Review Committee, and I think it is preliminary comments in that regard. Y'all need to understand what these recommendations, what exactly they represent, in that the Contract Review Committee has recommended that certain contracts be accepted or certain contracts not be renewed in their present form. That doesn't mean that we're not going to renew those contracts with the contracting agency. It may be with them, it may be with a different agency, or it may be staff-driven completely. It may be in the same amount, it may be in a different amount. That remains to be seen. So what this is, is an opening of what I'm going to call negotiations, for lack of a better term, between the city and the contracting agency. The Contract Review Committee doesn't have the authority to renew a contract between the city and anyone. That's the seven people that sit up here's responsibility. They also don't have the authority to direct us to open those negotiations. All they can say is up or down, renew the contract as it's written or not. And in certain instances, they've said yes, and in certain instances, they've said not. So with those preliminary thoughts, I don't, I know a lot of the senior citizens represented, you all may want to huddle up among yourselves and decide who's, how you're going to divide up your 12 minutes, but we are going to apply those limits. With that having been said, and I would open the floor to someone that would like to address the committee.
There's a unique place on our planet, a place where five unique sovereign nations come together and share a land of freedom. This place is quickly becoming one of equal opportunity for individuals of multiple cultural heritages and diverse experiential ages. A community, if you will, of historical significance and home for many world influencers. People who care for one another and in their hearts desire what's best for all lead this unique space in existence today. For all is the calling card for the Troy and Dolly Smith Family YMCA. It's named after one of the aforementioned world changers. Troy and Dolly, founder of the world famous Sonic Drive-In, founded their company on a profit-sharing model. What makes institutions like the Troy and Dolly Smith Family YMCA so special within a community is individuals who visit the space feel at home or comfortable in their socks. They feel the love that only the human element can provide. Back to this unique place, this city of five nations, depending upon whom you're talking with, it has a divided history. A divided populace is a populace easier to control and manipulate. That's not a bad thing. This is a natural thing that happens to better maintain one's own survival, a community's survival, to keep things under its power within the realm of its own understanding. This is a natural course of action for any being in a position of power to maintain control of its surroundings. On the other hand, in this city of five nations, there are individuals with different perspectives than that of power. They share cultural and environmental experiences throughout the day unique to their reality. These are individuals that tend to congregate at places similar to the YMCA. These individuals and their experiences can only, can really only be understood if they are found important enough to which to spend time. Time spent together builds trust. Trust is nurtured and made stronger in times of adversity, or it can be devastated beyond long-term repair. To build trust, two opposing opinions intentionally decide to acknowledge their opposition while at the same time committing to one another to work through differences, both sides agreeing the heart is what matters. The heart that exemplifies the true nature of the being, the heart which pumps the blood to the entire being, the heart that delivers invigoration for all. Though there seems to be a divide sometimes in this room, I suggest there is opportunity. Opportunity for all. Opportunity to build even stronger trust in this city of five nations. Opportunity for self-reflection by every individual hearing this to examine what is really important. Is it money? Is it programs? Is it power to control or to lose control? Or is it the benefit for all? Thank you.
I'm sure most of these people know that, that, excuse me, that was Daniel Shaughnessy. When you come to the podium, please introduce yourself. Most of us that are here regularly know Daniel, so. And tell us the subject that you're going to address.
My name is Carol Poole. The subject is the Shawnee Senior Center. After the information concerning the Shawnee Senior Center was made public, I began contacting city council members for more information. I realized the council members were not aware or misinformed. On Thursday, April 25th, I called the city manager's office to get on the agenda for the city council meeting scheduled for May 6th today. Due to the weather, I think, they closed city hall early. I left my name and number on an answering machine. Friday, April 26th, city manager Eric Benson called me back. I told him my concerns and we visited for about 30 minutes. I later discovered what he told me was not true. He began saying, quote, "The senior center was not even on my radar until a member of the senior board approached me with information." That was the first lie. I told the countywide newspaper, he told the countywide newspaper that his staff had been working on this project for four months. I will not go into the rest of our conversation, but I prepared for your eyes the rest of the lies he told me. During the conversation, I told him the staff were all seniors at the senior center. One woman had told me she was 75 years old, and how would she get another job? His answer to me was, quote, "Carol, you and I are, prepare for that time in our lives. It is not my responsibility to see that she has a job. I'm not responsible for what she should have prepared for." This woman lost her husband and her income changed greatly. This man has not only lied to my face, he has no concern for the people of Shawnee. He had to apologize to Ms. Kate Joyce and Suzie Camel, who wrote the interview column in the countywide newspaper, for what he said. During the last few years, Carrie Foster and James Bryce have sat in on the senior center board meetings as representatives of the city. They have conspired with Eric Benson to take over the senior center. I would say that in view of the misinformation from the city manager, that you table the vote concerning the contract on the agenda till you can get a true picture of the situation. I would say if you continue to keep Eric Benson as interim city manager, you are not doing your due diligence. I would also say Carrie Foster and James Bryce, Mr. Benson's co-conspirators, should also be let go.
If you desire, if you desire, decide, desire, I'm talking to the audience. I need to call on you before you come up because we've got more people here that want to speak, so if I could, if I could kind of see the hands and see who's in the line, so as to, it's not up to me to select who speaks for you all, but I will kind of go through the order in order that I see them, and I do recognize you, I'm sorry.
Fran Topping, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, I would like to actually address the topic of transparency. I thank you first for the individual or individuals responsible for pulling some of the contentious items from the consent agenda so that they might be addressed in a public forum. I think you also, I am not sure whether it was city staff or commissioners who had a part in reconsidering the initial denial of timely public access to the Contract Committee meeting minutes. They were, of course, denied until we pressed the Open Meetings Act issue, and fortunately we got those the next day, and I did not have to follow up on the steps recommended to me by the Attorney General's office. The number one core value on our city plaque over here is transparency. I hope that we will keep that in mind. There have been a lot of inappropriate backdoor deals in recent months. We all pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I served that flag 20 years in your uniform, and that is what service means. You work for us. You are public servants, and that means you serve us or you do not. Make that call.
Amen.
I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the historic Shawnee Alliance because the Contract Review Committee has recommended denying our $16,000 request for facade grant funding downtown. A couple of you on this commission also serve on that review committee, and I'm hoping after what you hear that you will reconsider your decision on that. The purpose of the facade grant program, which was started by the city of Shawnee several years ago, is to help prevent dilapidated buildings downtown and to spur economic growth in the downtown area, and it has been tremendously successful. I think you'll see from the handout, if you'll take a minute to look at that, that $24,000 in facade grants over the last two years has resulted in almost $100,000 improvements on the facade only of these buildings, and that does not include the money that these building and business owners have invested in addition to that. Now, when they buy materials to improve these buildings, they're buying most of them locally, and this results in sales tax dollars back to you. When they hire a contractor to do the work, that contractor is not only purchasing his materials locally, but he's spending the money that he earns locally, resulting in sales tax dollars back to you. These people, when they open their businesses and they furnish them, and when they purchase their inventory, what they're doing is they're generating sales and use tax backs, back to you, the city. And when they open their doors and they collect and remit sales tax, they're, they're collecting that sales tax to remit right back to you. This is part of that $16,000 investment, which is very small, coming back to you as a city. And they've employed people, and the people that they employ, they shop locally. And when they shop locally, when they buy furniture for their homes, clothes for their kids to go to school, when they eat at the restaurants, what they're doing is they're remitting sales tax back to you as a city. So this is economic development. And in addition, when these properties are improved, they go up in value, and guess what? The county assessor comes knocking at the door, and he's going to increase the ad valorem tax. I got a $500 increase that I'm going to be paying next year, and you know where this money's going to go? It's going to go into the Tax Increment Financing Fund, and it's going to be used as a direct benefit to the city to, to build streets and sidewalks and make other area improvements in the, in the area. So you can see there is a tremendous return on investment, and I guarantee you that some of these people may or may not make the, these improvements and open these businesses without that $4,000, but it does make a difference. I know that I had a building downtown that I renovated. I took advantage of the facade grant, and I ran out of money. If it hadn't been for that $4,000, I would not have made as much of an improvement to that building as I was able to do with that grant, and I'm not the only one. We have several facade grant recipients in the same situation. And I know that 0.05% of that third penny sales tax that was made permanent a few years ago is supposed to go or is dedicated to economic development in Shawnee. And I know that Shawnee Forward, and in the past, the SEDF, has received a portion of that money, a large portion, probably 300, close to $300,000, I think it's 286,000. And the, what we're asking for is $16,000, and I believe that the mission, the return on investment, our success, is no less greater than that. And we're asking for a very small amount, and I hope you'll think of this not as an expenditure, but an investment in downtown Shawnee and in Shawnee's future. Thank you for the opportunity.
Kate?
Change that height a little bit. Good afternoon. I'm Kate Joyce, and I'm the director of the Shawnee Senior Center. The reason that I wanted to talk today, you can see we have a room full of people that are not fond of change, and I imagine unless it's your very own idea, not anybody is fond of change. We have our books open to anybody who wants to see them. We have been sending monthly meeting reports to the city commission every month since I've been on board. Please come and look at my books. If we had any inkling that there was a problem that my board had found out about, we would have been taking care of it immediately. The problems that were identified or the issues that were uncomfortable for the commission, for example, us holding petty, petty cash at the senior center, that was addressed immediately. We have recently gone from an Excel spreadsheet format of accounting, which, if I was hit by a bus, nobody could figure out, to QuickBooks so that at least there is manuals on how to figure out what's going on. We are happy to provide anything. Had we known about this in time, if we knew that money was an issue, we could have had the grants already in place to cover the cost that the city is looking at eliminating. Personally, I'm not sure it's the money. I don't know exactly what it is, but I'm pretty darn sure it's not $116,000. That being said, last week I received $25,000 in grants. One of them I've already had to give back. The other one I haven't accepted yet. I'm waiting to find out what happens today, and I really would look forward to sitting down with my board and the Contract Review Committee or the commission, however the process is, to be able to talk about what you see as the problem and what we can do to fix it, put it down in writing, and track it. I want to be able to work there. This is the job of my life, and I hope that you can see that we are sincere in what we are attempting to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Pardon me. Good afternoon. I'm Corina Wilson Pickens. I'm not a native of Shawnee. I'm from southern Oklahoma. I had my own television talk show down there for seven years, and I've been a newspaper reporter columnist for 43 years. I, the Shawnee Senior Citizen Center is my life. And one morning early, I gave Ms. Kate a call, and if it had not been for her, I wouldn't have been here because she rushed me to the hospital, and it was my heart. They had to clean out all the valves. Anyhow, I'm at the center every day, and I guess she got tired so she put me on the board of directors. I have traveled all over the United States and foreign countries and everything, and this is one of the best senior citizen centers that I have been in. And I wanted you to know that Kate welcomes everyone. The place is always neat and clean and friendly, and I think Kate is doing a good job. If she needs the money to reimburse some that might be missing or whatever, some of the gossip going around, let me know, because Kate needs to stay down there and be the director. She's doing a great job. Thank you. Evidently, y'all are doing a great job, or you wouldn't have been elected.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners?
Tell us.
My name is Jim Ruth.
Thank you.
I'm here to discuss a boundary dispute and the way they're handled. I have a lot number two at the Kaufman Track out of Twin Lakes on Perry Road, and I'm asking the boundaries of the property that I leased from the city of Shawnee be recognized as they have been used and recognized in, in the past for many years. When I leased the property, the north end of the lot was identified by a wooden fence, the south, of course, the lake. There's a gate on the left side and a tree line on the right. There are pictures in your package that show you what I'm saying. The city approved my permit to build a storage building, but construction was stopped when a survey appeared that conflicted with the existing definition of the property, and the city asked me to wait construction pending a decision from the city. Now, back in 2007, a newspaper article by the city declared that the specific property lines could not be defined. A property dispute in 2017 was resolved by using historic use of the property versus a survey. This decision was made with the involvement of the city's legal counsel, and that is in your package. The city has allowed permanent structures to be constructed without survey, which actually wound up on another's property. The property lines have been moved and allowed to stay that way. Surveys have been ignored for many years, but if re-surveyed, new disputes would be created. I ask you to look at that map on the back of the page, your package. As Commissioner Gillum and many others are in full support of my position, and Mr. Gillum has excellent ideas moving forward after this issue is resolved. This has been an ongoing issue since early March, and every day it's delayed costs me money and prevents me from moving into my house. I ask that I be treated fairly and justly, the dispute be resolved the same as past disputes have been resolved, using historical use rather than surveys. If the city wants to develop an ordinance or policy to address the boundaries in the future, they have that option, but this situation should be resolved using past practice, and I ask that that be done quickly. Thank you.
I hope you will take my opening comments to heart and understand that we're trying to get the right answer and trying to get a good answer for the city of Shawnee in all of these matters. We don't intend to be arbitrary or capricious in any way, and I would also encourage you to understand that we're, as a group, are trying to do the best job that we can and would appreciate it if all would keep the public rhetoric in line with that. Thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay or, or not, as we enter the remainder of the agenda, but thank you for coming at any rate. Item four, consideration and possible action to approve Community Service Contract Review Committee recommendations for fiscal year 2019 and 2020. Are there any members of the commission that would like to talk about any of these items individually as opposed to a group? Understanding that it's not our job to negotiate these contracts, what our job is, is to accept the recommendations of the Contract Review Committee, and from my perspective, that's merely an opening of the negotiations for those contracts which the committee has recommended not be renewed in their present form. Are there any questions from the commissioners about whether or not you understand?
I might say I'm extremely impressed by the show up of folks here and the amount of interest in this senior center and whatever other things we have today. I noticed Kate in her talk did mention some of the things perhaps that she, I think, understands that she could change. Certainly, she's got quite a following here, and for a pretty good reason, I might add as well. I, we come across things like this when we're dealing with the city, we're dealing with this published money, and we have certain procedures, I think, that we follow, and also, we have certain requirements, or let's say, things that the senior citizen should and could be doing. And I think most of all those Kate understands, and I think that your actual presence here indicates a love for Kate. There's not much question about that, and I appreciate that. I feel the same way. But I think, looking at this, we do have other things that we need to sort of settle. Supposedly, they've been worked on prior, but also, I think, it needs to be looked at again. So if they, whether we get a new contract or we renew the other contract, I think within those, Kate could still be here, or something else could happen. But we do need to look at those things to do exactly, to fulfill our obligations to the public as well as to the, let's say, the, the love of you people that are here, which obviously have a lot right here. But that's kind of how I feel about it, and I guess we have two ways we can go. We can either have a contract renewal, or we can say, no, we're going to change this, or we're going to look at it further, and then see if we can correct those things that are not being done to our satisfaction. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, I might mention, I, one thing that our acting city managers talked about is to, covering some of this in our budget discussions, and it's obvious that from the past, when we had to talk 23 people into retiring, that we're not as financially suited as we were a couple of years ago or three years ago, and it took years and years and years to get to that position. I know you say $100,000 is not much, but $100,000 or $16,000 here, $16,000 there, does make a big, big difference. Some of the commissioner, I have discussed the possibility of, on these different contracts of renegotiating and trying to come up with solutions, and I've emailed the city manager back and forth, and hopefully this, this can happen. There, about the grants and so forth, I'd hate to see those grants turned down, even if we don't. down, even if we don't renew the contract because the Senior Citizen Center will still be there.
Absolutely.
And how it's operating, well, okay.
Order in the chamber, please.
But anyhow, that was, uh, when we, uh, I'm on the advisory, uh, committee, and Mr. Mayor and I both are, and there's, uh, three other citizens that serve on there. And, uh, anyhow, this is, just opens it up so that we can address different, uh, different things, and that's including in the VSI, whether it's the, uh, SOD grants or whatever it is. And the Commission will be working on the, on the budget the next, uh, 30 days, 45 days until, uh, June 30th. Of course, the budget then is just an item that we work with and can change at any time. So there's a procedure that we have to go, go through to, to get to that point. But again, when you overspend your budget, and, uh, that part of it was during this Commission's time, and part of it was during my time, for sure, on the Commission, is that you have to do some things to get that back in order, and that's what, uh, the city manager is trying to do, and I, for one, appreciate his efforts, and, uh, and, uh, that's what we're actually all trying to do. So that's, uh, some of the reasons that these contracts have come up like they have. And I appreciate everyone coming out and appreciate the support, but, uh, still, there's some, you know, always some room for improvement in anything that we, we do. So, uh, hopefully, we'll, uh, when it's all said and done, that'll be what happens here. And, uh, again, appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Are we going to do these separately, Richard?
Uh, I, I move the, I move to pull A, 4A, 4B, and 4F. Motion. A, B, G.
A, B, and F.
A, B, and F.
Which is the Historical Shawnee Alliance, Senior Citizen Center of Shawnee, Inc., and Visit Shawnee, Inc.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford to pull.
Oh, three items.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford to pull items 4A, 4B, and 4F, seconded by Commissioner Bolts.
Mr. Commissioner, just according to procedure, once pulled, there doesn't need to be a vote on the motion. They're pulled, just like a consent agenda, and will need to be voted on separately.
Thank you very much.
So that would relieve the remaining 4C, D, E. 4C, D, and E would be open for motion for approval of recommendation.
I don't know if, if the audience could hear the, uh, Council's comments, that we don't need to take action to remove those, that's automatic. So what we will do is first consider C, D, and E, uh, as a group, and then we will talk about items 4A, 4B, and 4F individually. Is there a motion to approve items?
I need, I need pull E also.
Which one?
There's a motion to pull item, or there's a request to pull item E, so that point we will consider items C and D together as their motion to approve item 4C and D.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford.
Do we need to vote on the other motion first?
There's no need for motion. Once they're pulled, it's off.
Okay.
They'll be voted on individually.
All right. Thank you.
Is there a second to Commissioner Rutherford to motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolts. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven eyes. Item 4A, consider renewal of contract with Historical Shawnee Alliance for fiscal year Is there any further discussion about that item individually?
Do we have recommendation from staff or what was presented to the committee?
I'll be happy to address that, Commissioner, and I'd like the opportunity to address each of these if you so desire. Uh, the, uh, the budget development demands that we examine each and every one of these budget items in comparison to each other. The, uh, recommendation to remove these three from the automatic approval, if you will, which historically has allowed those items to go forth as fully funded, was made after considerable discussion and examination of the, the financial impact. That's what you have before you. If, this will not be the last $15,000 examination you make, nor will it be the last $116,000 examinations you have, you make. I suggest that you, that the committee in its wisdom chose to, uh, approve three of those items, and staff is, uh, it takes that as their decision and forwards it to you for your discussion and, and decision. But the items that remain are considerable financial impact and should be examined in concert with the many dozens of other funding issues that you'll have to examine, rather than making them a sacred count before they've been examined in comparison with the rest of the priorities.
Any other questions of staff? Is there a motion to, for possible action on item 4A?
So if, if we don't renew, just start with A.
It, we're not, we're not deciding to renew or not renew the contract. We're deciding to accept the recommendation of the Contract Review Committee, that this contract needs further review, negotiation, whatever term you decide to apply to it, before we automatically renew it. Point of order.
Well, may I make the statement?
No, ma'am, you may not.
So who, will it come back to us for renewal?
All contracts have to come through this commission for renewal.
So basically, we're going to negotiate, and then ultimately, we still have.
What the city manager's suggesting is that this be reviewed in the context of our budget discussions among ourselves, and we may vote on these individually, or we may vote on them in the aggregate through that, through that budget process. But there will be some additional scrutiny given to, to this item. That doesn't mean that there won't be additional scrutiny applied to the other items. Again, remember, we're, we're not renewing these contracts. The, the Contract Review Committee does not have the authority to renew a contract. Only we have the authority to renew a contract. So even the ones that we're accepting their recommendations to be renewed are not without scrutiny as we go through our budget process. Is there, is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the community, of the Community Service Contract Review Committee as to item 4A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Sehorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call a question.
I think the emphasis is that, uh, the Commission and, uh, what, that to the city managers, we want to take a look at this in the budget procedure, and that's why I was one of them that wanted to separate these out, is so that we can take a look at these again in the budget procedure.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Call a question. Uh, one abstention and six eyes. Item 4B, consider renewal of contract with Senior Citizens of Shawnee, Inc. for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Recommendation to not renew the contract with Senior Citizens, Inc. for, for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Is there further discussion as to this item? Is there a motion?
Should we clarify what, at this point, after we vote for most of the people in the room, what's, what will happen with the senior center tomorrow, next week, or the length of time it takes us to work out a contract? Is it going to remain funded through the end of June 30?
Yes.
So we have until then, as a commission, to make a decision and to work out with them, their board, whether we continue with them, do something different. But at this point, it remains under contract till June 30th and will function, and we will have another opportunity or multiple opportunities to, to try to figure out.
Technically, that, technically, that's true. From a practical standpoint, I think it, I think it not prudent on our part to think we're up against a June 30th deadline. I think there's, this is part and parcel of discussions that we need to have on an ongoing basis, both within the context of the, of the budget analysis and the budget work that we're going to do, and outside of that context. If there's something that they're doing down there that, that our treasurer has problems with in the way they're handling petty cash, for instance, and I think those discussions need to be had, and I think they need to be had way sooner than any discussions that we might have in terms of, of contract renewal. So, uh, yes, June 30th is a magic date, but, but I certainly wouldn't have any intention of, and wouldn't want this commission to, to run right up against that deadline as a drop dead date. That's not fair to, to any of the employees or, or even city staff, for that matter, in terms of, of any increase in responsibilities that they might have. There a motion as to item 4B? The Chair moves that we accept the recommendation of the Contract Review Committee. Is there a second?
I think.
Motion. Is there a second? Is that a second? Seconded by Commissioner Sehorn. Is there any further discussion?
This, this definitely is not a, I know this is, this discussion's been painted as a, you know, if we, if we accept this today, that we're shutting down the senior center, and that is, that is not anywhere near the truth.
I, I think anybody that thinks that has not been listening to what I've said.
Absolutely.
And so that's not the question, that the, what we're trying to do is get this off a high center. We can take no action, uh, on this item, and, uh, and it will be as though the, the Contract Review Committee recommendation is accepted, because the contract, as it's specifically written at this point, runs through June 30th. It will expire of its own terms if we take no action. Uh, again, I, I think it's incumbent upon us to begin to have some discussions among ourselves, and that is the underlying reason for my recommendation to accept the recommendation of the Review Committee. It's just a matter of opening negotiations, which I think we need to have. Uh, is there any further discussion?
We will have to vote in the future, too.
We will have to vote in the future. Absolutely. Call a question.
To continue, extend, renegotiate, whatever options we are. But in the meantime, it's still going to operate.
Correct.
I have some questions that I kind of like would have answered. Um, so if we do, uh, cancel or not accept the contracting and renewal, you have my assurance that it's because I want to get the answers to the questions I have, and not because I'm looking to change the staff or the people that are there right now.
I, I think there will be plenty of time to add context to this discussion as we move forward. Call a question. Motion carries with six eyes and one nae. Item 4E, consideration renewal of contract with Safe Events for Families for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Recommendation is to renew the contract with Safe Events for Families fiscal year 2019, 2020, to reimburse expenses for events up to $63,000.
Move we approve the, uh, Contract Review Committee's recommendation to be extended, be approved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to approve the action of the Contract Review Committees. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries with six eyes and one abstention. Item 4F, consider renewal of contract with Visit Shawnee, Inc. for 2019, 2020. Recommendation to not review the contract with Visit Shawnee for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Is there any further, is there any discussion on this item?
I had questions on this item as well as others that I think have been gone over, but I think it's worth going over again, that we're not saying this entity's going to cease, it's, or, or.
Cease to exist.
We're saying we're going to look at this contract with our budget and see the best way to move forward. It's not going, we're not necessarily saying it's going to stop because we're not renewing the contract, same as the one that we just voted on. I just, I think that was worth, it's worth saying that again. I know you've said it several times, but it's, there's a lot, there's a lot of people.
Exactly.
They have city funds that are, uh, they've been given that are, uh, in reserve, so they can not only just operate till the end of the year, they could operate, uh, next year for some, for a few months if they needed to. And I understand why they need to take, keep reserve, because if something happened, or tornado or something came through and wiped out all the hotels and there, there that be, so I can understand, uh, there's a deal about the reserve. And, uh, serving on the committee again, one of our discussion was that, uh, that we might want to do something else with some of the money, and that's why we did not renew the contract. And again, it was to negotiate with them, to, uh, give the Commission the opportunity to negotiate with them, and the city manager opportunity to negotiate with them to make changes or, uh, to implement some other things that we'd like to do now.
Thank you. Any further comments? Is there a motion as to item 4F?
I'd move we approve this, uh.
Approved, not approved?
Yeah, no, that we approve the, uh.
The recommendation of the committee.
So it would be unnecessary to table this because we're going to look at it again. I've, I've asked and answered this myself several times. I'm just, I'm repeating myself, I think, but for.
We're required to have our budget in place before the end of the year.
Yes.
So all of these things are going to ripen, uh, be, within, within the timeframe of the next 40, 30 to 45 days.
They've got to.
So these answers will come fairly quickly.
Absolutely, and I would.
What we're going to do, so there's not going to be a lot of pending and people wondering.
Hopefully, that'll be within, you know, meeting, first meeting in June, and we'll be able to, to answer some of these questions.
Okay. Did the Vice Mayor make a motion?
He did.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries with six eyes and one abstention. Item five, public hearing and consideration of the ordinance to rezone property located at 411 North Kickapoo Avenue from R1 Single Family District to C3 Highway Commercial District for purpose, purpose, purpose of retail development case P0319 application. Applicant Nellman Braunie. There you are.
Mayor, Commissioners, and this is a 0.42 acre tract located at 411 North Kickapoo. The property is currently zoned R1, which is single family. Uh, the request is for C3 Highway Commercial District for future retail development. And the 2005 comprehensive plan that's currently adopted reflects the map as R1 and public space. However, commercial frontage is consistent within the area and will be reflected as commercial corridor in the current comprehensive plan that is currently underway with RDG. Existing land use is primarily C3 from I-40 to West 45th on Kickapoo, and multiple parcels on North Kickapoo between 45th and MacArthur are currently C3. No written response from surrounding property notifications have been received by the Planning Office. Uh, staff does recommend approval of this rezone application.
Any questions of Rebecca?
Seth, do you not receive any opposing letters or anything, or notices?
No, sir. We received no communication either way in support or opposition.
Okay. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion, discussion among the board?
I move we approve the rezoning, sir.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Is there a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Salter. Any further discussion?
Read that.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit. A tract of land described as beginning 289 feet north of the southwest corner of the northwest quarter of the northwest corner, excuse me, of section six, township 10, north, range four east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi. range four east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, thence east 183 feet, thence north 100 feet, thence west 183 feet, thence south 100 feet to the point of beginning from zoning classification R1 Single Family Residential to C3 Highway Commercial, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries seven i's. Item 6, consideration of approval of the preliminary plat for the Grove Retirement Homes located at approximately 3900 North Union Avenue, case S0419, applicant Crafton Toll and Associates.
I'm just going to stay up for this one. This was...the final plat for this development was approved back in October. However, they had intentions of phasing out the project, so including the water and sewer infrastructure for phase one first, and then doing phase two at a latter time. However, they had originally plotted it as one lot, which by our ordinance, we had to have all of that infrastructure completed at the same time prior to that development. So, what they have done is, we had a meeting with them on April 12th, and they basically reorganized their plat to represent the single lot with all of the infrastructure they plan on constructing before they develop on that, and that's been approved and recommended by city staff. We've just broken those out into separate items, since they did major revisions of the preliminary in the final plat. I broke them into two separate items for approval.
So, they've already started work out there?
No, sir.
Dirt work?
They haven't started work at this time. They had under the previous plat that was adopted back in October, they were under the impression that they could phase out the project, even if it wasn't plotted as two separate lots. So, whenever we came back and had meetings, we went through the code book, and we said this infrastructure, the way it's plotted, it will all have to be in place before development can start, and they decided to replat, take initiative to replat it at that point. So, no development has happened at this time. The Grove Development will be a senior community center for active seniors, 55-plus.
That's why this sounds familiar.
This sounds familiar.
So, are they going to continue on the west side of the floodplain, or where the creek is that goes down through there, or...
So, they've replatted the single lot to just be on the east side adjacent to Union. And if they do, if it is successful, I'm under the impression if it is successful, they will look at adding a second phase to the plat at that time. But right now, they're just working in the context of the eastward side of that 20 acres, which is adjacent to Union Avenue.
Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I move we approve the preliminary plat.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven i's. Item 7, consideration of approval of the final plat for the Grove Retirement Homes located at approximately 3900 North Kickapoo Avenue, case number S0619, applicant Crafton Toll and Associates. This is the second half, so we're approving the final plat on the front part, the part that fronts on you.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Any additional questions of Rebecca? Is there a motion?
No. No reproach.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt. Seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries seven i's. Item 8, consideration of the ordinance to amend Article 3 Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 14, in its entirety of the Code of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, adopting new flood damage prevention standards, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is just an amendment to our floodplain ordinance. All the ordinance remains the same as it was adopted in 2010. The biggest change is that it's adopting the new maps that are coming out. We've been working with FEMA for probably the last five years with all the floodplains around town, getting a lot of those areas reexamined and shrunken in a lot of cases, especially around some of our subdivisions and around the lake area. Those areas will be changing. So, the new maps will adjust those lines, and if this is adopted, the new maps will go into effect as of May 16th.
Questions of Michael?
Updating, basically.
Are we going to have more or less in the floodplain?
Less.
Yes, what, more, yes, less?
Less. As a general rule, less.
As a general rule, less. There are some areas that will increase due to the new studies, but as a majority, there will be less.
So, when will those maps be available?
May 16th, though. They'll be effective May 16th.
And that will apply to building permits issued after that date?
After that date, they will be used. Yeah, we can't use them until that date. That date is set by FEMA.
What about a guy that's already got his building permit? Can he proceed? Do we have any of those...do we have any of those conditions existing?
If they've applied currently, we have been looking at them in both cases, and we've been telling them, hey, if you just wait a few days, you know, as of this date, that condition will change, so that they may not apply, or we may not put, you know, conditions on them that are unnecessary, is how we've been applying that.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Sehorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bolt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending Article 3 Flood Damage Prevention, Chapter 14, in its entirety of the Code of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, adopting new flood damage prevention standards, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an effective date.
Call a question. Motion carries seven i's. Is there a motion to approve the emergency clause?
Certainly.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, seconded by Commissioner Bolt.
Yes, sir.
Call a question. Motion carries seven i's. Item 9, consideration of the ordinance to amend portions of the Shawnee Municipal Code, Chapter 6 Aviation, providing for repeal, providing for codification, providing for severability, and setting the effective date.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Many years ago, the code was written to include the minimum standards for operations, development, and procedures at the Shawnee Regional Airport, and we've been asked by the FAA to make sure that we use those minimum standards to guide our operations. So, the advisory board and staff went through about a nine-month process to review all of the documentation that was issued in the year 2000, and then amended over time through city ordinance change, as well as resolutions of the Shawnee Airport Authority. And the changes are fairly significant in the list of definitions. Some of the technical terminology has changed over that time. So, we propose to reissue the minimum standards as part of the ordinance and update that ordinance to reflect the information that the FAA uses, by the way, of definitions for specific terms, and to ensure that we're staying in compliance with their guidance.
So, I take that to mean that all of the changes that you're recommending are being pushed by the FAA?
The changes that we're recommending are corrective in nature, and also to make sure that we comply with the areas that the FAA would like to see included in our minimum standards, which are directed by that ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Well, you can't fly your drone out there.
Actually, we do actually now speak of drones, which we didn't in the year 2000.
There you go. Any questions of Bonnie?
I move we approve the aviation code.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to approve the...
Chapter 6.
Changes.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bolt.
You don't fly your drone out there anyhow there yet.
No, not without asking Bonnie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending portions of the Shawnee Municipal Code, Chapter 6 Aviation, providing for repeal, providing for codification, providing for severability, and setting the effective date.
Call a question. Motion carries seven i's. Is there any new business, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We will recess this meeting to the Shawnee Airport Authority. We do have a quorum. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm ready.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven i's. Confirm action taken by City Commission on Agenda Item Number 9 regarding the ordinance to amend portions of the Shawnee Municipal Code, Chapter 6 Aviation. This is the same item that we just addressed on the City Commission Agenda.
Sounds up.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Call a question. Motion carries seven i's. Is there any new business? We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. We do have a quorum. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move. Commissioner Gillum. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven i's. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
We will return to the...
About about a 10-minute recess.
Good idea.
We will be in recess for 10 minutes, at which time, we will reconvene the City Commission meeting. We're going to turn the air conditioner down if anyone else is beside me.
Or pass out blankets.
Well, we crank it down when we think there's going to be a big crowd. Since I have the gavel, they may send me home if they don't turn it up a little. Item 11, extended audit and budget brief. Our Treasurer, Chance Allison.
Mayor and Commissioners, thanks for having me this afternoon. This is going to be kind of a two-part series. We're going to talk first about the audit and the results of the audit for our fiscal year ended June 30 of 2018, and then the second part, we're going to talk about the small fund budgets that we began to develop for fiscal year 2020 that we'll move into in a couple of months. Each of you have one of these. There'll be slides that Ryan will put up on the projector and the screens. This is the same thing up there, so you guys want to focus your eyes on all the way across the room.
There's no copies of this available for people out there?
No, they have access right here.
Okay.
Yep. The first issue we're going to address is the audit results. We received our financial statement audit that we have formed annually in January that was corresponding with a CAFR that was helped to be developed by Crawford and Associates. They helped us assemble those in our consulting arrangement. We received an unmodified opinion on that, which means there's no modifications. That's what they would generally consider a clean audit opinion. This opinion is in relation to the conformity with GAAP, which is U.S. General Accepted Accounting Principles, so our financials are compliant.
Now, a clean audit opinion doesn't necessarily mean that there aren't any findings.
That's correct.
To the extent that they have findings, they will supplement those to us.
That's correct.
In what you would think of as a management letter report.
Right.
Say that these things don't rise to the level of us needing to say something in our report, but we think you need to pay attention to these particular issues.
Well, yeah, a clean audit means that there's no...the financial statements and the notes thereon are free of material misstatement. So, that doesn't mean there's not compliance matters, there could be internal control matters, but that does mean the financials, the figures, are free of material misstatement. The second portion of this, this year, we had a single audit, which I don't...it's...the federal government calls it a single audit because they're...we're auditing federal programs for grants that we receive. It should really be called a dual audit, because we have an audit on financials and audit on grants. We also received an unmodified opinion in relation to the compliance with our federal grant awards that were...that we expended during fiscal year 2018. We expended about $875,000 in federal awards. If we spend over 750,000, that spurs a single audit. So, there were no comments related to the single audit. In a major award program that was audited was our Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. The last portion is our internal control of our financial reporting. The auditors issue a report that explains what our responsibilities are for internal controls of our grant compliance, and then for our financial reporting. They issued a letter that stated they did not find any material weaknesses, and this is what Richard's referring to as a management comment. A material weakness would essentially mean that there's an internal control problem that could warrant material misstatement if it wasn't addressed. Significant deficiency is not as serious as a material weakness, but however, if not addressed, it could eventually lead to a material weakness. And then, compliance matters are noted in the Internal Control of Financial Reporting and Compliance Report. We had two compliance matters that have been ongoing repeat findings. The first is budgeted appropriations. We had three departments that our budgeted...our expenditures exceeded our budgeted appropriations, and that was the general fund, or general government, public safety, and cultural and recreation categories. This was, again, a repeat from fiscal year 2017. The other compliance matter was a negative fund balance. We had three funds that had a negative fund balance, the general fund, the street and alley fund, and our hotel motel tax fund. To correct those, we'll essentially do a better job managing our cash flows and managing our budgets, so that we ensure that items are not overspent in those categories.
Well, that could be, you could make transfers within the budget, or appropriations and switch transfers within the budget to take care of part of that, too.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
General fund, street and alley fund, I can't understand that. Hotel motel tax fund, how can that overspend?
It was an erroneous transfer that was made out of the account, and it's been corrected since year end. It was just a book accounting entry. Actual cash was not moved.
Okay, so that's not really the case, is it?
Right.
Okay.
Sure. Ryan, can you put it up on the... Let me get to where we're at.
Sorry, to the audience.
Okay, we're at the government-wide results. This is the government...so, we have a whole host of funds that we use to operate for accounting expediency. When we prepare our government-wide financial statements, we roll all those funds into one financial statement. So, we have the government-wide statement of net position, and then the government-wide statement of activities. And so, this is where these numbers are pulled from in the CAFR. If you look, the far-left column is the statement of net position, and the change is from fiscal year 2016 through fiscal year 2018. And if you notice, it kind of goes up and down. Fiscal year 17, we had proceeds from a financing arrangement, which caused that net position to creep up a little bit. But if you really looked at the net position and took out the effect of that financing arrangement, our net position has continually decreased slightly for the last three years. Next, moving to the middle column, this is revenues. The same...this is the same case. Revenues in the statement of activities from financing arrangements cause our fiscal year 17 revenues to creep up above what fiscal year 16 and 18 were. So, if you took out the effect of that, our revenues have been slightly declining the last few years. This is generally attributed to sales taxes, which we've had discussions on previously. And then, if you look in the far-right column, this is our expenditures. Our expenditures have slowly, from 16, 17, and 18, have slowly been creeping up. This is due to personnel costs generally, and just the cost of operating. It increases every year, and that's just to maintain our core government services.
That 2017 repositioning you was talking about, that is when we redid the loan on the West Watkins Lake and the water line.
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
I believe there was a loan that was closed in December of 2016.
Right.
Which would have fallen into the fiscal year 16, 17 net position. Y'all have any questions on the schedules? The next is the government-wide net position. Our total net position is divided into three categories. Net investment and capital assets. Essentially, what that represents is total capital assets that we've purchased, less in... any debt that's associated. So you have a, you have the net investment. Restricted is restricted for various reasons, whether it's debt service, it's legally restricted because of certain legislation. And then unrestricted is our, is our, what, basically what's left over. You can see we have an unrestricted deficit of approximately 22 million. Now, the, generally this, this is a gap issue. In, in 15 and 16, we issued GASB 68, 71, and then 75 for pensions. This is a, this is when all the governments were required to, excuse me.
They probably don't know what GASB is.
GASB, Generally Accepted, I'm sorry. Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued a pronouncement which required governments to recognize their pension liabilities. So this is statewide pensions that are sponsored by the state, such as police pension, fire pension. We have to now pro rata recognize our liability for each municipality that participates in those programs. So currently, our pension liabilities that we've recognized on our books are approximately $22,500,000. So that decreases our unrestricted net position to a point where it turns into a deficit. The other issue, we have accrued compensated absences that are added in. Now, this is assuming that say every employee at June 30, 2018 would leave and we would terminate the existence of the government, right? So we would owe another $2.7 million. When you add those issues back in to the net position, we really have a positive net position of a little over $3 million. General Fund, this of course is the most significant of our funds in the government. This hosts public safety, engineering, our general government activities. This is essentially everything but a utility board. I'm sorry. Thank you. In fiscal year 18, our general fund balance decreased. What I'd like to highlight in this from the CAFER is we had general fund revenues of 18.9 million. This was, these came in below our budgeted estimates by 2.4 million. Our general fund expenditures of 24.3 million exceeded our budgeted expenditures by 4.23% or approximately a million dollars. This issue alone is, is why we're scrutinizing most of the contracts, any, any expenditure. That's why our department heads have done a phenomenal job of looking at any of their items that they've purchased, it's all small, small contracts, technology, all these things. We're, we're looking at every item that we're purchasing to ensure that this is a realistic and it's necessary for our operations. The largest portion of our, of our costs related to the general fund were, were personnel, which is why we had to make decisions earlier this year to retire some folks. So this is, this is the, this really highlights our, our position and why we're scrutinizing things the way we are. Fiscal year 19 outlook, I did want to highlight currently, the general fund is in balance. So budgeted revenues are due equal budget expenditures, so we're not going to blow over like we have in these past few budget years.
Chance, we were approximately 90, 96% of our gross receipts in terms of personnel costs. With the changes that we've made, what will that percentage now be? And second question is, what's a kind of a best practices? I know there, cities are all over the place.
Right.
If there is a, if there is a standard, what might that standard be?
If we meet our budget.
Right. I think we're probably going to be around 85%. I'd have to double check that, but I think that's probably a reasonable estimate right now.
That is my recollection.
Yeah. As far as best practice, you know, it varies entity to entity. It depends on how much free cash flow they have from sales taxes, depends on their sales tax rate, depends on what their availability of sales taxes are to just operating. You know, of our three and a half percent, one and a half is effectively tied up in capital expenditure. So we have to, we might not have the luxury that say Midwest City or another larger entity would have that has a higher, that controls a higher tax rate. I did ask Crawford and Associates, who's all over the state, and the, the percentages, general fund, personnel cost to total general fund revenues varied anywhere from like low seventies to, to low eighties or even mid eighties. So that's, she, my contact, I think she, she interviewed three or four entities.
So we're still on the upper end of?
We're on the upper end, even at 85%.
Yeah.
And to expand on that, Commissioner Smear, we have in fact frozen hiring except in those extraordinarily key positions were, that we absolutely cannot live without those entities. I suspect we're now below 85% to what extent I can tell you only anecdotally, but we have not hired for a number of positions. And as, as typically the case, people leave, find another job, whatever, we are not backfilling those positions. We're scrutinizing the personnel budget as the first priority.
Additionally, I would note that we, we are not on the upper end of city sales tax when we look across the state.
No, we're not, we're actually on the lower end.
That our county has a sales tax, even though our total may be on the upper end of, of what we see around the state. The mix between us and the county is not, so.
Well, that's the county and absent from school.
Right.
Right. That is true. You have, have any questions, we're into the CAFER.
I guess it took that shortfall to sort of press the issue as far as our personnel costs. Income shortfall really showed it up, but we've made some strong moves to correct that, so pleased with that.
We have.
I've made the comment from time to time that even in my, in my commercial life, overhead goes up a little at a time, but you discover it all at once.
That's right.
And that's typically true across the board.
Chance, on the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd say you just do the math here that between the general fund expenditures of 24 million and when you collected 18 million, you can see real quick where your difference is. And you got to get into your cash reserve. So that's what's happened to us. It's just all of a sudden, here it is.
On the CAFER, I forget now what page it is, the, I think it's page 76. I think that's right. 76?
Yeah.
I'm getting there, I'm slow. My iPad's slow, we're going to blame it.
There you go.
There was two fund balance, where is it? Maybe page 70.
76 or 77.
Somewhere in there.
It was showing, and this is from 17 or, it was showing the city manager fund, or the city manager fund.
The department.
The, the, the fire or, or safety, with both of those had huge discrepancies, or looked like discrepancies to me.
I, I believe these are generally depreciation costs on, that, so in other words, it's a non-cash item, right?
Okay.
That was just, those are accounting adjustments they make at year end. And unfortunately, they didn't allocate those costs among all the departments of the general government. They just threw it on the city manager because it's the first, it's the first department of the, of, of the general government. Now, it, when you look at our budget to actual, just on the cash basis, it didn't go over.
Okay.
We've sat down and I had to, and looked up the actual expenditure and we was trying to decide how that got to be almost $600,000. And there has to be something else included in the city manager. And I've asked them to contact the auditor to clarify, you know, what else is included in that. Also, if you look down to fire suppression, which is over 900,000, I've asked the same thing there because that is throwing the whole thing out of, way out of balance.
Right.
So I've asked for clarification in where those come. If you look over to the back of your audit, it's broken down on streets and alleys and everything else, but those two accounts are not broken out what's included in those. So maybe we can get that clarification here before long.
It's a different page number than it is in the paper comments.
There's, there's a program, y'all are all familiar with PDF, there's a PDF expert program that you can download and you can actually go into those PDFs and circle them and change the color and write your questions or make remarks. So y'all really should look at that.
I do mine on a sheet of paper.
Comes with the blue hair.
The next session, small, small fund budget briefings. These are going to be funds that we don't have a lot of control over as far as the revenues and expenditures. They're restricted for certain things and they're, they're usually one or two items.
Correct that, dig up here. I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, this is for, this is for our fiscal year 2020 budget.
Okay. I found it.
Well, that's hard to see, isn't it? The first fund is the Street and Alley Fund. This, this fund's purpose generally is to collect motor vehicle and gas excise tax. And this, this pays for our overhead street lighting. So the lighting around the airport, this, all the lighting you see on the streets, this pays the OGN E bills related to, to those activities. There's not a lot of latitude in this budget. We have, we're estimating about $450,000 of electric cost going into fiscal year 2020 based on historicals. Right now, we collect probably about $219,000 in motor vehicle tax and approximately $55,000 in gas excise tax and then some, some sundry fees of miscellaneous income. So this means the general fund has to subsidize this fund to the tune of about 170, or almost 170,000. And that's to make sure we, we have the, the funding in this, in this particular Street and Alley Fund available to pay our obligations related to electricity bills. Next budget is our E911 fund. This, this, this fund collects E911 tax, which you probably see on your, your phone bills. For wireless, it's 75 cents per, is it per line, Mason?
Yeah.
This is, this, this is from all the, the wireless provider, the accounts that are in this, in our locale. This pays for services and equipment operations related to the, to the 911 emergency telephone system. So we're expecting about $300,000 of, of E911 tax receipts in fiscal year 20. And then we break these down in between other services charges and capital outlay. This is to keep our phone systems relating to dispatch online, and we keep them up to date using this fund.
What's included in that $75,000 capital outlay?
This is generally like, like software cost and then any upgrades that they need to do on our system.
Did you?
And this is just an estimate.
Did you anticipate moving to the 911 and replacing the new building, or is that not included in there?
That'll be in, that'll be in the, in the capital fund relating to the new sales tax. Next is the revolving oil and gas fund. This fund was designed to collect permit fees from oil and gas operators. Now, doing some research on this fund, we haven't actually received any payments from oil and gas operators since fiscal year 17. So I'm not budgeting anything out of this, anything in or out of this fund during, for our fiscal year 2020 budget. Our fund has, currently has a $283,000 balance, just of cash reserve. So should we choose to use that, that is available to be budgeted.
This is a result of no wells being drilled within the city limits.
Far around the lake.
Yeah.
Does the city own any mineral rock?
Yeah.
Not enough.
It should get better if the world situation keeps doing like it is, but oil's going to go out of sight and so is gasoline, so that might, that make you feel any better.
Next fund's Economic Development Fund. Purpose, the purpose of the Economic Development Fund is to collect a sales tax from our one cent tax I was passing 98 or 99. We anticipate approximately $309,000 of sales, dollars of sales tax collection during fiscal year 20. The funds are generally used, this fund to pay our Shawnee Ford contract, economic development. We anticipate no significant changes to this. The only, the only change that we do anticipate, in previous years, we've paid our SECDA contract, the operating contribution we make of approximately 60,000 under the SECDA contract has been paid out of the Economic Development Fund. With anticipation of the Spectra contract, that won't, that won't be an issue in fiscal Spay and neuter fund, this, this fund you can imagine is what it is. We collect animal control, animal control revenue. And this, this generally pays for veterinary services. This, this is a very inconsequential fund. We, we anticipate collection of about $2,500 by animal control. And I've budgeted that we, we use 2,000 over the fund balance so that we can perform additional veterinary services for animals that run our care. Hotel motel surcharge fund, this collects our 5% hotel motel surcharge from our local hotels, and this distributes the funds for tourism activities. Previously, we've, 94% of this has been paid to VSI with 1% paid to the City Shawnee for administering the funds. I've decreased this budget based on anticipated negotiation, and of course, this will be revised along with the VSI negotiations determining how we move forward with that.
Can you say those numbers one more, 94%?
94% of the-
And 1%?
94% of the hotel motel tax was paid to VSI in previous years, and then 1% was paid to our general fund to administer those funds. That's per, that's per the ordinance.
Where's the other five? I was just missing 5% of 94 plus 1.
Yeah. No, it's been-
Well, there's 5% there left somewhere.
Commissioner, rather, it's been collected as, as fund balance in this fund, the fund balance, as of year end, we, we anticipate to be approximately 174,000. Police sales tax fund, this is from our one cent permanent sales tax I was passing 98 or 99. This, this is, collects 1/16th of that 1%, and then this is pushed over to the general fund to help assist in police activities. Same thing with, with our next is our fire sales tax fund. This was enacted under the same legislation.
All those funds are laid out and explained and where it talks about sales tax on page 38 of your audit in case you, anybody's interested.
That's correct.
Might be, might be page 38. It might be.
Not in Darren's. Our TIF fund or Tax Imperative Financing Fund, this collects ad valorem taxes from our downtown district, and this, this will eventually distribute those for capital improvements. We collect approximately $52,000 a year from ad valorem taxes. To date, we haven't actually, I don't think we've spent anything besides legal fees when we expanded that TIF district. So right now, I think we're going to have about 205,000 of fund balance available to be spent on, on capital projects that we deem necessary.
When, when are those, any of those funds become available? Do they have to collect them so long before they become available?
That's, that's, I'm not sure.
That depends on how the TIF is set up.
Mm-hmm.
But any increase in that, in the TIF area then goes into that account, to the, to school district or to the county. We don't get any annual taxes, so that's, doesn't go to us.
Right. Drug forfeiture fund, this collects drug forfeiture funds from Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics and then the District Attorney's Office. These funds are distributed for drug enforcement activities. We annually receive on average about 15,000 a year, so we budgeted 15,000 for fiscal year 2020. In some cases, we do receive a significant drug bust. I think this year we received about 40,000, and then we're able to distribute that back to law enforcement for, for drug enforcement.
So we can use that at the time, like we did on that last one that they, you've got 15,000 budgeted, but if there's a large forfeiture, then we can allocate it-
Right.
Then, for a vehicle or something like, I think.
Well, it has to be for drug enforcement, so as long as it falls under drug enforcement, it's, it's available.
Well, money has to be appropriated into the budget and then-
That's correct.
So it's got to be appropriated. So it's gotta be appropriated by the commission first.
Gifts and contributions. This, this fund is as described, collects gifts and donations and then distributes the funds based on the donor restrictions, uh, if they apply. There's not anything budgeted in fiscal year twenty, uh, for these funds, as we'll encumber those, uh, based on need. And the last is, is our cemetery care fund. The purpose of this fund is to collect cemetery revenues and then distribute the funds for, for cemetery needs. We, generally, we've received, you know, three or four thousand dollars a year from the sale of lots, uh, and cemetery activities for miscellaneous revenues. We've, this year, we budgeted that same forty-five hundred dollars that we, we plan on receiving with an additional twenty thousand to use some of the fund balance. They have some needs at the, uh, at the cemetery and so they expect we can use these for some of those capital expenditures versus dividend jar capital improvement fund.
Have you all, and I know the answer just before I ask it, but for, for education of everybody else. Do we have a reasonable estimate of the amount of deferred maintenance that we've got around, not only the cemetery, but in other areas where we're possible? Parks and kind of on down the laundry list or is there, or is there an effort to put that together?
I'm not sure we have an estimate right now at this point. Moving forward, one of the issues we need to address is establishing a long-term strategic plan to address those deferred maintenance items. So we can continually be moving towards, uh, current maintenance on those. The last, this is just total funds presented, you know, most of these funds seem inconsequential, but their, our proposed revenues on these are almost two point four million. And then corresponding proposed expenditures are a little over two million. So, you know, even though some of these funds might be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars of, uh, of, of fund, it's, they do add up.
Yeah, our actual audit that showed a net loss of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in SMA and that's because of our loss on the trash collections and, and I guess water collections or what else was it? That kind of shocked me when I got to that, it showed a, you know, a loss of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. I know we increased water rates and increased, uh, trash rates and so forth.
Fees, yeah.
I guess that's, but.
That's precisely why we asked for that rate increase.
We had to transfer money in there to cover that, cover that loss to make that SMA balance in.
In turn as possible.
Questions of Chance, other, other?
Use tax that we collect is, that's from utility, is that from utility bills?
No.
That's internet and, and things, if you order office supplies online, you're supposed to pay use tax. So when the tax commission audits people, generally it's contractors that, that, which you get your big collections from.
One of the big ones for us is the out of state or out of city concrete, so the Van Aiden and the Rimpel, they pour concrete inside the city limits and they charge city sales tax on it. And that's where we get our use tax, the biggest percentage of it.
So is there a percentage or is there something on utilities that, like if you're, when I pay my electric bill, there's.
There's sales tax.
Franchise.
Sales tax, but I didn't know if that was considered under use tax or it's just in the sales tax.
Franchise fees are separately stated somewhere in the.
We receive franchise fees directly from the corporations, like OG and E will cut us a check directly for franchise fees for the use of our infrastructure.
I figure the concrete would be in the sales tax, not use tax.
Yeah.
It should be. A lot of the use tax will come from, but let's say that we have an out of, out of town contractor come in here and they'll buy air conditioning equipment that may go on the building free of sales tax because of their contract. Well, when they bring it in and install it, they're supposed to pay use tax in the jurisdiction in which it gets installed. So a lot of that's picked up by Oklahoma Tax Commission audits and, and it's, it's very common.
They did a good job on air conditioning in here, I guess.
Yeah, we can probably save some money by turning it down.
I've been in here once, it's hot, it's good, I breathe, so.
To the extent, to the extent that you all have questions that occur, you know, set up a meeting and I would say that to the public as well, as you all go through this stuff and I know, uh, we, we want it to be scrutinized. We're not trying to avoid that. We, we, sometimes we battle over what the answer is or, or what it ought to be, as you all are aware. But, but we, we don't wanna not disclose this stuff. Chance and I have spent hours talking about how we better disclose this. We're looking at some software upgrades which will allow a lot of this stuff to, to be available online so that the public can scrutinize it as, as well as these people. So we, we know we have, I don't wanna call them deficiencies in our system, but some areas where I feel like we could do a better job, uh, from a reporting standpoint. We're aware of it and, and are trying to do a better job. But, uh, anybody can, can call the treasurer's office and set up a meeting and, and try not to beat it to death. We're happy to answer your questions if we can.
And this be placed online, once it's accepted, then we can place it online so that they can go in and examine the different copies, okay?
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Chance, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner comments?
Wow, London, it's really cold in here, yeah. I, I really appreciate, and of course, a lot of them have left, but I, I really appreciate so many people coming out today. I, I really wish that that happened every meeting. I think the more people that are here and, and really take an interest in city government, I think we're all better because of that. And I really appreciate everybody coming out and voicing their opinion and, and, um, and being here and participating. I know we dealt with a lot of difficult issues today and I hope everybody listened carefully, um, when, when we said that, you know, what, what we're doing is, is, uh, opening time for negotiation on, on a lot of these. So, you know, today wasn't necessarily the final answer. I think in some of it, we're just, we're just getting started and we've got a little bit of time to really look at things good and bring some clarity to the matters. So hopefully people listened to that and understood that. But again, I appreciate so many people coming out. I, I just think that's a wonderful thing when you do that. I wish it was standing room only every time.
I'd like to give a, kind of a shout out to our management team, actually. It's, uh, we've been going through some kind of touchy times getting the city back in good health again and we're well underway getting that, to that position. And some hard decisions had to be made during this time and I know that were not easy. Sometimes you let, compassion is one thing, but business is another. And certainly we had certain goals to reach and, and we're reaching them at a pretty good pace and well on the path to getting where we need to be. Uh, we're, we're healthy, our credit's excellent, we're getting good rates on our, um, funds that are coming in, on some of the bond issues, et cetera. So all is good except we're, had a few more steps to get through yet to get where we wanna be. But I know what it's like to try to come in and, and do this kind of job. It seems kind of heartless at times and at times it's very difficult for somebody that has compassion to handle something like this. So I, I certainly understand how our guys, I think they've done a very good job.
Absolutely.
First thing I'd like to start with is that maybe, I was unaware till Linda and I were talking, I was in Dallas at the meeting mid-change at three o'clock and I didn't know anything about it. And I've, uh, it gives the perception and I, I'm sure that talking to the city manager that that wasn't the idea of changing the time, but it gives a perception of trying to avoid some of the, uh, people being able to come out at night. So I, I'm sorry that we, you know, if that was the perception and if that's what happened, that, that you didn't, that there's people out there that didn't get to attend, that they know that that wasn't the idea, but perception's reality. So the other thing is that, uh, in fifteen years I've served on this commission, we've called special meetings and so forth, but this is the first time we've actually moved the time up and, uh, it was for the audit and the budget discussion that we had. I talked to the mayor and the city manager about that. But again, uh, in the future, I, it's FYI, I'd like to have the commission's consent before we, uh, move the time up or, and if we need to call a special meeting, that we do that instead of, uh, just moving the ti, arbitrarily moving the time up. So I appreciate any consideration along that lines in, in the future.
I said many earlier, I think. I asked and answered my own question several times. Someone, I will, someone sent me a message today involving our meeting and said it was a, uh, the amount of people here was a sign of a healthy community and I believe that.
I agree with that also. I think some of the contracts that didn't get renewed need to be looked at. I think, uh, you know, change is always hard. I mean, we went through this with the expo and a, a bunch of other things, you know, with the amount of personnel cost we had. Eric's done a phenomenal job trying to get this thing back in order and he's taken a beating over it and, you know, we, we appreciate it. But anyway, we'll get a chance to look at all this and make an educated decision in the future. So it doesn't, doesn't end anything and I hope everybody that was here and all the people that came and spoke understand that. That's the reason Darren kept asking the question, you know, we are gonna look at this again and, and the answer is yes.
One of the advantages of setting at the end of the table, uh, everybody has already discussed all the purpose of issues and I agree with every thing that's been said.
Uh, from my perspective, a, a couple of things. I, I would simply request that we keep the rhetoric respectful around town. We, you know, we're, we're not going around trying to hide stuff in spite of what, what people may think. And we don't do that and the city manager doesn't do that and, and, and we're not gonna do that in the future as far as I'm concerned. In terms of the meeting time, that's my bad, I apologize and, and I've suggested that we move it up because of the audit. And Chance and I had not discussed ahead of time, uh, how long that was gonna be. We offered all the commissioners an, an opportunity to submit questions, uh, and I was thinking, you know, it might go four or five hours and I didn't wanna be sitting here at ten-thirty or eleven o'clock. So to the extent that I've caused somebody to miss a meeting, I, I apologize and I agree, we should get the commission's consent before, before I willy-nilly do something like that. Having been duly chastised, I'll, I'll make a note and we'll kind of go from there. Uh, I would also point out that we may well make some mistakes, but it won't be for a lack of considering things. We, we know that, that, uh, that we have to, have to sometimes make some hard decisions and, and as I said earlier, we're doing the best we can. Nobody gets up in the morning and says, I'm gonna go do something wrong today. We, we really are trying to retrieve it as best we can. And finally, it may be the worst-kept decision or the worst, worst-kept secret in town, but, uh, sometime in the next little bit, we will be talking to Chance Allison about becoming our city manager. So we'll be considering that. We've had Eric here as an interim. For, for a year. He, he jumped right into the fire and has done a tremendous service to the city of Shawnee in terms of how we're gonna react prospectively. I've known Chance for, for ten years or so, he's a Shawnee guy, he, he's a quality guy. I think will be with us for a long time, should we, should this commission decide to engage him. In addition to that, Ashley Neal, who is his, he says more than capable assistant. I've not worked with Ashley directly, but if Chance says, uh, she's a good hand, she's a good hand. He's been an in-charge, uh, with Finley Cook for, for a number of years, so he knows his way around what staff tells him and how to react. So we, we are building a really good nucleus of, of good young people. I honestly believe that, that can serve with, with Rebecca coming on board, Chance. We got, you know, if you look all up and down the line, I think we're, we're trying very hard to improve the, the quality and depth of our talent. And I think, uh, almost across the board, we're, we're moving in the right direction. So bear with us as we make these changes and, and, uh, hopefully we'll confirm Chance and Ashley in their positions. And Rebecca, it's good to have you and, and the rest of the people that we've added. So without having been said, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.